Okay, good evening to each of you all. Thank you so much for attending tonight. Hope you had a great Labor Day weekend. Had a good time, good picnics, good hot dogs, and you name it. I would ask you, if you're here this evening, if you would maybe silence your cellphone, if you have one with you, and if you need to use it, please probably step outside the room here and talk to whoever you need to talk to. We have a not very long agenda tonight. Could be an interesting agenda for those who haven't been to a city council meeting before, but hopefully you'll stay with us and learn a little bit about city government. But before we do that, I always like to stand and with each of you all, if you can, and let's say our pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance as citizens of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with clear reason and justice for all.
Ms. Stephanie Cooper, would you please call a roll, please?
Trey.
Here.
Mary. Leslie.
Here.
Joe.
Here.
Elsie.
Here.
Bill.
Here.
Debbie.
Here.
Andrea.
Here.
Being seven present, we do have a forum, so we're ready to begin our city council meeting. Before I begin our meeting tonight, I would like to say how great it is to see Bill Lam Lyon back here tonight with us. This guy unbelievably went through a lot, lot of tough surgical procedures. I'm sure he doesn't want me to explain all of them, but he had about every bypass you could have taken care of, arteries in his neck. And I was visiting while he was preparing for all this, and he was just calm as a cucumber heading into this major, major surgery. But I just give accolades to the nurses, the doctors, the people who took care of Bill, and it's unbelievably that he's sitting here tonight and I think feeling better, feeling good, and it's just a blessing that, you know, our God and watched over himself and those who took his care, and just unbelievably great, Bill, that you're here tonight with us with your only one absence from all of that.
Thank you. That's the first time I've ever missed a council meeting.
Well, we'll let you get excuse on that one.
But I will say that Andrea's cookies.
Brought you through.
Helped me through the whole thing.
Do what I can.
Yeah, and you do it well.
Well, she has not divulged what she had in those cookies, though. But glad to see you here tonight, former mayor, and just unbelievably what you've been through, but you're back with us. You have your agenda in front of you that you actually received either late Thursday or Friday, or Friday morning, can't recall now which, but would anyone like to approve the agenda as presented, or would you like to add an item to it or delete an item?
Like to.
Okay, motion made by Leslie Wright.
Second.
I think I heard Debbie Pollard, second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. You have your minutes in your pockets. I guess you've read through those minutes, I would hope, but now. And if you haven't, I'd be glad to give you time to read through them, but if you have and you understand what's in those minutes from our past meeting, I'd ask that entertain a motion that we dispense with reading the minutes, save us some time and move forward. So anyone would like to make that motion?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes for office.
Okay, motion made by Debbie Pollard, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Not, all those in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, also in your pocket tonight, you have our payables. Those have been taken care of by Heather Woodcox and Stephanie Cooper, so if anyone has a payable tonight that's been paid, if you have any questions or concerns about any payable, would surely entertain your questions and discussion at this time. Motion made by Council Lady Carter, second by Joe Davenport. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Also in your pocket, you have our actual investments in our different banks. Please take those out and look at those, and also your general ledger reports. You're always welcome to ask any questions about any of these things and these items that you do have a concern about. Our ending balances, I'll say on our bank accounts are running pretty well at this time, usually about this time of the year before we have any influx of new money such as taxes or anything like that, some of the account balances will tend to somewhat go downward, but we try to recover with some new revenue coming into the city. So I think all in all, at this two months into our new fiscal year, our accounts are running pretty well. Does anyone have any questions on?
Make a motion to approve the financials, mayor.
Okay, motion made by Joe Davenport, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
There's a second by Leslie Wright. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We're moving right along. This is now a time that we come to item seven of our agenda. We always welcome public comment from anyone here tonight, so if you would like to bring any matter to the city council for them to listen to, you have a beginning of four minutes, and if that's not enough time for you, then the council can afford you additional minutes if in fact they feel they need to hear more from you. So is anyone here tonight that would like to speak to the city council about any matter? What I'd ask you to do when you come forward, just give us your name and address and tell us where you live, and we'll certainly listen to what you have to say.
Hi, Elizabeth Kirkwood, 1515 Dawkins Road, Lagrange, Kentucky, and to.
Speak down in there, Liz.
Can you hear me?
Well, as long as they can out back, that's all.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's better, right there, you found something.
Amazing. Two things, I wanted to thank you for jumping on the wagon to get that flooding problem looked at, and to thank all the people that are involved. Okay, thank her, and I think it's going to be great for the community, it's going to be great for those people, but I think it's going to be great for everybody. And the other thing is, I wanted to say that because we have a small town and we have that as one of our biggest attractions, we have the farmer's market, we have all of these programs downtown, we have music, we have everything, one of the things I think too that adds to that is people being able to go in these little carts, these little golf carts, and it's on the golf cart thing. It looks like, I did a little bit of homework on it, and it looks like this has been revised a few times, and the state has come up with some rules that make it safer for a person to drive because they have to meet certain criteria, and they have to be responsible because they have to have insurance and a number of other things. It seems like it would be worth giving it a chance because that's one of the ways people communicate with each other and drive down the road and say hi and deliver things and pick up things like groceries. If it turns out that it's a bad idea, you can always stop it. If one person is not obeying the rules, that person can have their right rescinded. But I'm just putting in a vote for it because I want to see as many of these small hometown things stay here as possible because the world's changing. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Anyone else like to come up? Yes, ma'am. Yes, just, if you could, just stick close to the microphone and give us your all's names and your address, and we will be glad to listen to whatever you have to bring to us tonight.
My name is Rhonda Richens, and for security of our family, we live in Crestwood, Kentucky. I'll be happy to share our physical address with you if we're not taping. We have an adoption, we have two adoptions, and you know my husband's place of employment, so we'd rather not tell you our physical address. But I also have.
My name is Reagan, and I'm 10 years old.
My name is Ryland, and I'm eight years old. We made the signs that said, that say be kind around the county.
We first drove through Larue County and saw signs that said just be kind. We decided that we want to do this here in Oldham County in Lagrange, except our signs say be kind because you can be more than just be kind. You can be loving, you can be courageous, you can be generous.
We make our signs different because, because we could be different, we could be kind in many different ways.
Our goal started with just 60 signs, now 600 signs later, we're going strong and do not see an end in sight. We want, our goal is to make Oldham County a kinder county and Lagrange the kindest city. We are thankful for the people and the businesses that have helped us with our kindness campaign.
These two simple words can make a big change.
Be kind.
I am so grateful for the influence that my children have had on not just me, but this city. They have allowed us the opportunity to collaborate with many businesses, the farmer's market, Main Street, where people did not even know existed. We have been to two farmer's markets, and many of the merchants that came to pick up a be kind sign had said that they did not even, they were not aware that we had a Lagrange farmer's market. It has brought many opportunities, and it's interesting to see that their smart goal, their first goal was just 60 signs. We have 200 extra signs at home that we're making that we honestly cannot keep up. They also had told me that it's not just about being kind around Thanksgiving, it's being grateful around Christmas, it's being joyful around Valentine's Day, it's being loving. So we know that kind signs are not going anywhere, and we're grateful for all of the merchants that have helped us along the way. We want Lagrange to be the kindest city in Kentucky.
Well, I've seen your signs everywhere, and I guess before I, which one of you all would be the president of the company? How did y'all decide who's going to be the president, who's going to be the vice president? Are y'all equal presidents of your operation? Okay, you are, okay. Well, we're looking for, you're from Crestwood, but we need some startup companies in Lagrange for sure, and we got a big business park out here, so we'd like to have a business in this business park, and possibly, wouldn't it be wonderful if, you know, I was watching TV yesterday about a company called Callaway that makes golf balls. You know how many golf balls they make a day, seven days a week? They kick out 250,000 golf balls a day. Just think perhaps if you all have the day that you have this company just kicking these things out of a press and they're 250,000 plus a day, that's going to be fabulous, but we want you to do it right here in Lagrange, okay? You can't do it in Crestwood. So, but I know there's other council folks here who just love your signs. I bought three the other day. I actually had a fellow at McDonald's the other morning ask me, where, mayor, do we get those signs? I said, I'm not really sure, but I think someone said go online to your all's website, is that correct? Because you can tell us about your website in a moment, because this is being broadcast, this is being televised all over the United States today, tonight, so you might pick up some new work here. But I know there's folks here that just absolutely think your signs are unbelievably great in showing kindness, that's what we need to be doing throughout this whole world is showing kindness. So thank you all so much, and I know some other folks I think would like to say a few things as well.
Yes. I just have to say to you Reagan and Ryland, I am so proud of you, so proud of you. You know, I started my business at the Lagrange farmer's market out of just a single whoopee pie, and I'm seeing you starting your business out of just a couple of signs, and we got 20 signs into Q and A today, and they are all gone now. We can't keep them in the store, and you've really started something. You've started a movement, and I'm hoping that that continues and that we can spread it and we can be the kindest capital of Kentucky and that you started that, so I want to thank you very much.
I've been looking for one of those signs ever since I saw the first one, and I would love to have one.
Well, we brought it, but it didn't, I didn't bring a steak, I can bring one in, I have one in the car. Go ahead, ask her what.
Which charity would you like to donate to? Which charity would you like to donate to?
Which charity would you like to donate to? The money that is gifted for the signs. It will go there.
Very good, thank you so much for reminding me of that. Is Ken right?
Yes, ma'am.
I love the colors too. Thank you, girls, that's wonderful.
Thank you.
I think I was asked that same thing, which charity, and you have, you have a certain amount of charities you can give to, right? I mean, not, it's just not broad.
No.
It's a certain amount.
And it's all local charities here in Lagrange and Crestwood and Oldham County.
Okay. Anyone else wish to say anything to these little entrepreneurs? Well, thank you so much for coming up tonight, yes.
John, I'd like to say thank you for your effort, and I know when, when I got home from the hospital, I had one of your signs in my yard.
Was that a hit or?
Yeah, so, thank you.
Actually, he asked me to bring it down to the hospital so he could show it all to his nurses and doctors. But I never did get there with it, so.
I just want to say thank you to both of you, and your strong mama, she's a great parent, and your dad, and it shows how she's brought you all up. You have such a loving heart, and it makes me proud, it makes me want to cry when I see that two kids this age is doing this, I think this is wonderful, and I'm proud of you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all, come back and see us sometime. Okay, anyone else tonight for public comment?
Tracy, I can fix them forward like if you drive the range. John, next time it rains, you all solve the problem on the drainage or on Third Street. Next time we get a rare heavy rain, if you think about it, right through my neighborhood, it's awful. You can ask Stephanie, and the first part of spring when people start mowing, I can't mow because it's too wet, and people are scared, you know, in the back a part of the yard, they're going to slip and cut yourself, you know, foot off or something. And my neighbor said her, I mean, it just stands in her yard, like she lives on an island, it's a heart, and it just stands.
Well, we've been doing some work down in Lagrange Acres recently, just this past two or three weeks, we've been doing some work down there, we've called down to do, so if you've got a specific area, as we did on Third Street, we got, we got on top of that as soon as it was brought to us, so Corey Rusenek, he's covered up with projects, but I'm sure we can get to yours too, Tracy.
Okay.
We can at least take a look at it.
Yeah, and you can talk to Stephanie Winters, because I thought I talked to her about it, you know, in early spring, and she says, don't worry about it, because if I get a complaint, I'll just tell John, there's no way you can mow that back part right now.
Okay, we'll be glad to take a look at it, Tracy, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else for public comment? I would say to Ms. Kirkwood, you know, in her questioning, her comments about golf carts, that topic is certainly in discussion, it's trying to get through the committee, committee side of the discussion. Former Mayor Joe Davenport's chair of that committee, we would have had a meeting last week about it, but he has a sister who's awfully sick, and he just was not able to make it back from another part of the state, so I'm sure he will get that meeting scheduled as soon as he can, okay? So we have not forgotten about that subject matter. Anyone else tonight, public comment? Okay.
I'd like to make a public comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I think we need to watch our trees, because I have seen trees on Main Street were watering.
Get your thing down. Turn it down, pull it down to your mouth, please, so people can hear you.
I said, we need to be aware of our trees, because my tree on Main Street actually had folded its leaves and was trying to die, and I went down through town today and looked around, and there are several more big trees that are trying to die also. So if you've got a tree in your yard that you want to keep, be careful and maybe give it a drink.
Okay, that's a good suggestion, especially ones on Main Street, Corey, I'm not sure if Art's been thinking about those or not.
Those also, yeah.
Okay. Okay, if no one else for public comment at this time, we'll close the section for public comment, and we're going on to item eight, and Stephanie Winter, code enforcement officer, has something to bring to the city council tonight. She told me last week, so she just wanted to speak to the city council, so not really certain what she has to offer, but I said, I'll give you the podium for just a few moments.
No, I don't think you gave me a time limit on how long I could stand up here, so.
Depends on what you're saying. This council may not want here after four minutes.
So several weeks ago, we had a little friendly competition going on in the office. The mayor challenged all of us to come up with an idea of something we could do in our city, put it in an envelope, seal it up, and we would have a lunch together, and we would open these envelopes up. So one day for lunch, we all got together, we opened up these envelopes, and we read the ideas out, and each one of us had some very unique ideas of what we could do in our city to make it a better city. Some of our ideas, you know, we wanted to recruit some businesses, such as like bowling alleys, go-kart places, we had talked about maybe doing something in our parks, movies in the parks on a Saturday night, have people bring their picnic lunch, we'll put a movie up. We talked about a roller skating rink or even an outdoor ice skating rink in the wintertime. And we also had some ideas about the Oldham reserves, maybe putting some soccer fields out there, you know, Elizabeth Town, some of those other towns have big soccer complexes, and a lot of people in this community travel far away to go to these soccer competitions. And then the other idea we had was to clean up our city, to have like dumpsters available for people to clean the junk out of their yards, to help clean up debris, that type of thing. So then we all voted on it to see who had the best idea, and the number one topic that won was let's clean up our city. So taking with that, we decided to go ahead and set a date in September on a Saturday where we could provide dumpsters and have everybody clean up. If you've got junk that's laying on the side of your garage that you haven't been able to put out into your dumpster, we'll have a dumpster, we'll have a location for you to bring it to and get rid of it. So we picked a date, and just randomly, we picked September 21st. Well, coincidentally, September 21st is actually Worldwide Cleanup Day, and there's 150 different countries that are participating, so we are just a small little drop of water in this whole big pond of cleaning up our world. So that's what we're going to do, is on September 21st, we are going to have a cleanup day, and we will start spreading the new, the word. It's not going to fit in, it's not all going to fit in there, but we're putting little flyers together, we're going to put little signs up, we're going to blast it out on social media, we're going to put something in the Oldham era. It's mostly going to be a word of mouth kind of thing, we don't want to junk up everything, but you know, here's some pictures, like here's one. These people have a fence and they have all this junk just laying there. That's what we're trying to clean up, just those little itty-bitty things that kind of take up a lot of space. So it'll be, again, September 21st, we're going to run it from eight until two. We are also going to say that if there is someone elderly or disabled that is not able to get to our dump site with our dumpster, that call us ahead of time, and we will make, we'll have Public Works, we'll have somebody go out there that day to help pick up that stuff, and let's get it brought in. We don't have a location yet where we're going to put the dumpsters. We do want to put it someplace that's secure, behind a fence, so that we can lock it up and close it when we leave on Saturday night, and we don't have to worry about illegal dumping or dumping too much junk into the dumpster, so we're still working on that. Hopefully by tomorrow, we'll have a plan on that, and we can start blasting out our information. We're asking everyone to reach out to your neighbors, you know, it's the whole be kind thing, let's help our neighbors out. If you know of a neighbor next door that can't get out and can't move around, go over and offer to help. Hey, if I see this junk you've got piled up back here, can I take it away for you? Can I get rid of it? And we are going to have a portable food truck that's going to be making the rounds, serving some hot dogs to people that are out working around in their yard, so we can take some photos of people that are taking advantage of this great worldwide day of cleanup and that are working out in their yards, and we'll feed them some food. So that was our plan. Elsie.
I just want to say that we did this 15 years ago, and what you said about behind a fence, a secure fence would be the thing, because we ended up with a huge freezer full of rotted meat sitting outside the dumpster in front of the skate park. And of course, it couldn't be moved for three or four days, and it was kind of bad.
Right.
But we also probably need somebody there that would help them put stuff in the dumpster, because that was a problem for some of the people.
We are going to have the dumpster area monitored, we will have, whether we have somebody from Public Works, whether we have some inmates from the county jail helping us that day.
Yeah.
Because we want to pack those dumpsters as full as we can get them. Republic is giving them to us free of charge.
Nice.
You know, we're not paying for this, so we want them as full as we can get, and we want to make sure that it's not construction crews bringing, you know, their construction stuff. We want to make sure it's people that are cleaning the junk out of their yards, that's what we're doing this for.
Right.
So somebody will be with the dumpsters at all times, and then again, if we can keep it in a location where we can close the fence and secure it up, the dumpsters will be picked up on Monday morning and we'll move on.
If it's not secure, they'll sneak in at night, that's what they did on us.
Yes, they will, that is correct, they will.
Yeah.
They will. So does anybody have any questions, any ideas, thoughts?
Hello. We used to do that in Pee Wee Valley, and we had everybody in the world coming up there. Is there going to be, until finally we say you have to be a citizen of the town to bring it up there? Is there going to be any requirement, I mean, some people from Jefferson County?
Yeah, the people that are a citizen of Lagrange. We haven't figured out yet how we're going to make sure that we track that, but that is our plan, this is for the residents in the city of Lagrange.
Okay, the other thing I had to say is not a question, but that also is the county's Free Shredding Day.
Oh, there you go.
Will be out at the fairgrounds.
Okay.
And so you can have your documents shredded for free.
So that's another bonus for it, clean out your yard, and after you drop off your stuff at our dumpster, take your shredding down and have it shredded, and enjoy your day of rest on Sunday the next day.
That's cool. Good thinking.
So we have not secured a area to put the dumpsters as of tonight?
We have not, no. We've had a couple ideas, and it's not panning out just yet, so. We had talked about having at the water company, they've got a nice fenced-in area, but that just, it's not going to work out. We're going to look at, maybe see if we can do it up at Public Works. They just, the water company's just not real comfortable with having. They just, the water company's just not real comfortable with having people out there around their equipment and stuff that they have fenced in.
Well, they'll be on the front, I don't understand that it'll be on the front side with somebody inside there watching things, a person that belongs to the city.
Someone would be there watching it, yes.
When I suggested let's have this contest at City Hall, I did tell all the ladies there that I would give them a gift card, and we're from zero cents to $1,000. And they didn't know exactly what size the gift card was going to be, so actually, they're $5 apiece. So Stephanie was the win, Stephanie Winter was the winner. She submitted the winning idea. All of them participated. There were good ideas, but after a vote of all the ladies, they chose hers, which I think, thought was a great suggestion from all of the employees at City Hall. So now, as far as the food truck, I volunteer, I've got this trailer that I pull behind my truck, it's actually got a grill on it, and it looks, it's a crazy-looking trailer. But anyway, I will pull it behind my truck, and anybody that she lines up that's working in their yard, I'm going to fire the grill up, and we're going to swing by and give them a coke and a hot dog or something, and whatever goes with it. We're thinking about kicking this off maybe that morning about 8 o'clock, maybe with some doughnuts or some cookies from Q and A. She's generously offered those, Q and A has. But we might kick it off, some cookies for the people to come in, maybe get some green safety vest or something, and go from there. But Stephanie was the winning, winning person, so she was able to receive $10 worth of gift certificates. So the runners-up got $5 each.
They've all been spent already, so.
So.
Ran down right away, I thought it was the $1,000 one, and I didn't want to lose it.
So anyway, thank you so much, Stephanie, and you've got your flyer there tonight. I think she passed out.
Yes.
So from here on out, till now the 21st of September, we want to keep on pushing this idea out there, and hopefully having a, get our city cleaned up more so than what it even is today. I feel like our Public Works works every day at cleaning our city up, as do our policemen, everyone involved, and it's looking really good, but we think we can do better. So Ms. Kirkwood had her hand up in the air. Would you like to add something, Ms. Kirkwood?
Come on down here, we can't hear you. Recycling, people will be bringing all kinds of stuff that you really don't want to go in the ground, and we have a recycling truck. We have a beautiful recycling truck. I mean, I would live in there, honestly, it's gorgeous. We could have certain things recycled, you know?
That's an idea, too.
People bring down light bulbs, batteries, TVs, all that kind of stuff, computers, whatever, and I'll come down and help you with the recycling.
Okay, I've got your number, we'll call you and put you together with it.
The county has that being, that truck they pull, so maybe we can incorporate in it in our day, Stephanie, so that'd be a great idea.
We'll do that, we'll work on that.
So, anything else, Stephanie?
No, that's all I have right now.
Thank you very much for your fine presentation. Okay, typically, we have a La Grange-Main Street report, but I don't see anyone, I don't think, here tonight from Main Street. If there is someone here, please come forward. Okay? No one? Okay, how about our La Grange Utilities report? Anyone have any questions about the report from La Grange Utilities? And...
They're still working to get it across the interstate, and then that should be completed very shortly, very shortly, so.
Okay, so is that the extent of your report, Ms. Carter?
Yes, it is.
Anyone have any questions on the utility report, financials? If not, I'd entertain a motion to go ahead and have that report approved by the council?
I'll make a motion that we approve utilities, meeting...
A second.
Okay, motion and a second, any for a discussion? If not, I was in favor of the motion, let me know when I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, tonight, we have actually two public hearings, one setting our 2019 property tax rate. We have had a first reading of that ordinance last meeting, and tonight is the night we're to have a public hearing on the rate itself. So Mr. Cregmell, would you want to lead us into that public hearing, and just give us a briefing on what the rate actually calls for? I will say, before we do that, the rate itself is to stay exactly the same, of 20 cents per hundred, and the personal property will stay at 26 and a half cents per hundred. And that's identically the same rate as we, I think Stephanie has said we've charged since 2009. She said it's not been up or down since 2009, so it's stayed constant, the tax rate is to stay the same. So Mr. Cregmell, would you like to brief us on anything you need to bring to the council before we go into a public hearing?
Sure. This will be the, a reading and summary of ordinance number 10-219, it's an ordinance levying a general tax for the city of La Grange pursuant to KRS 92.280. In summary, it's, like you said, 20 cents per $100 of real property, 26.5 cents per $100 of personal property. It's due September 15th. There's a 2% discount if it's paid before October 15th, a 10% penalty if it's paid after November 15th. The deadline is December 15th, after which collection actions could be taken, including liens and all that. And Section 7 clarifies that this is a general purpose tax that would go into the general fund. And this is for fiscal year July 1st through June 30th of 2020.
Okay, just a little background on where we are with this, you all. We have a total revenue of real property, of accessible property in our city of $702,499,000. This past year, we anticipate on bringing in $1,340,017. With the new assessments on certain areas that the county PVA has reassessed, we should get a new difference of approximately only $64,000 new dollars for the next fiscal year from our taxation of 20 cents. The reason we have to have this hearing actually tonight is because anytime you exceed the compensating rate, which of all figures would be 19 and a half cents, the compensating rate is basically the same amount of money that we would generate, that we brought in last year, and to compensate us for the same amount, the rate would actually have to be dropped to 19.5 cents. However, they do, House Bill 44 does allow you a 4% allowable increase from year to year, if you wish to take it. After compensation of the rates themselves, we could actually raise our rate to 20.2 cents and still be within the 4% of the allowable rate increase across the board. However, this city has always taken a position, if we're moving along as we are, let's keep the rate as it is, and we'll be, we'll work within those means. The only persons in the city would be, even though the rate remains the same, would be anyone whose property has been reassessed by the PVA in the last year or so. I think the PVA reassesses each quadrant in the county every four years, and as we were looking at the tax bills today, there is one quadrant in the city that I feel like the assessments have been reassessed. So if you're in one of those areas, which I think it's the area to the, it'd be to the northeast, northeast from where we're sitting, you probably have a reassessment that, because of that, your assessment times the 20 cent rate, you will probably play a little bit more in taxes this year, because your quadrant was reassessed. Otherwise, if your quadrant in the city did not get reassessed, then you're going to pay identically the same amount of city tax as you did last year. So that's how it, that's how it will work. A thing we've done here before we go into a public hearing, and Councilman, not Councilman, Attorney Cregmell, and I've talked about this, seems like to me, we've always made a motion and a second to approve the tax rate before we go into a public hearing. And if I ask Beach Cregmell, "Why do we do that, or why have we done that?", to me, seems like all I need a motion for is to go into a public hearing and let each of you all hear the discussion back to us from the public. But I don't see really the purpose of committing yourself as a motion to approve any ordinance coming before us that has a public hearing, committing yourself to be in favor of it, if in fact, you might hear something in a public hearing might cause you to not be in favor of it after the public hearing takes place. There are occasions that does happen, because some people have pretty convincing messages that they'll bring up here, and then you'll have second thoughts about it, about, you know, "I made a motion to go in and support this, but after the public hearing, you might come back out and want to rescind your motion, because, you know, I heard something here tonight that I didn't understand fully." So I think that's been done over the years differently, but I've never really known how you make a motion to approve something unless you're just going to be for it regardless, no matter what you hear, but you basically committed yourself prior to going into a public hearing. So does anyone have any questions or concerns about that way of doing it?
Yes, John, that a motion to approve could also be a motion to deny.
Yeah.
And I think the reason it's been done, motion first, then public hearing, is so that the public has something to come up and talk about, whether it be approved or denied. It gives them a heads up, basically, of where the council is on any given subject. But as far as I know, I can't remember it being done any other way than that, motion first, then public hearing.
Well...
But I mean, I could be completely wrong, but that's the way it's always been done.
I'm just, you know, if you, if you hear what I'm saying...
Oh, I do.
Okay. I just say, once we get ready to talk about these tax rates and/or our transit room tax a little bit later, there may be somebody might show up, and even though we, as a council, might feel good about the transit room tax, and someone makes a motion to approve it, someone seconds it, basically, to me, you've committed yourself to make the motion in favor of.
No, because you can vote the motion down, you don't have to vote affirmatively, you can vote to deny the motion. Yeah, let me, let me clarify a little bit, John. The motion is normally to adopt, okay? But if the, I believe, the general concept is that a, you usually make a motion to go up or down one way to initiate the action, but in situations where there are motions made for something other than the adoption of an ordinance, like I make a motion that we pick up trash on Thursdays, okay? Then that simply needs to be, that can be seconded, and then, but really, people haven't really, when they're seconding it, they're really just authorizing the discussion, and then later, at the end of the discussion, you slam the hammer down that the discussion is over, then there would be a vote taken on that action. Does that make sense?
Makes sense, but all I'm after is, if you want a motion...
Uh-huh.
In addition to a motion to go in, I can understand a motion going to a public hearing, but do you want a motion, council, to say, "I support this tax rate, and I receive a second on it before we even go into the public and let the public discuss it"? That's what I'm asking.
I think you have to.
Well, you might, well, I thought we discussed this, what you're saying, we have to tonight.
Well, that's not, that's, for general motions, for actions is different than for ordinance.
Okay.
I think, I think that's the difference of what our discussion was, is that every time that somebody has an idea, and we want to have a discussion on it, then, you know, there's a proposal.
Okay, who'd like to make the motion to approve this tax rate?
Make a motion to approve the tax rate as presented.
Okay, who'd like to second it?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second. Okay, now, who'd like to make a motion, go in public hearing?
I'll make a motion to go in public hearing.
Who'll second it?
Okay, that's the clarification, you don't have to have a motion to go into public hearing, you just go into it. You just take control and go into it.
Well, we've got a motion going to public hearing, a second, we'll go ahead and do it that way, it's not going to hurt anything. Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor of the motion going into a public hearing? Let me know when I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, the floor is open. You've heard what the tax rate's about, it's identically staying the same, so be glad to listen to your all's comments.
Richard W. Rankin, 519 Horton Road, La Grange, Kentucky. One question to your attorney. If I do not, or somebody else beside me does not pay this tax bill on November, on the deadline? Are you with me?
It's December 15th.
Okay. If that is not paid, that tax bill is not paid on that piece of property, then I pay, or you pay, that tax bill on that piece of property? Can you or can I hold a lien against that land, so it cannot be sold until I, or you paid that tax bill?
I think it has to be, like, it has to be declared delinquent. I mean, I don't know exactly, but it, it, there has to be, I think, an advertisement of the delinquent taxes, and then they...
That's what I'm asking.
They have a sale every year.
That's what I, that's what I ask you.
Yeah. If you, if you go through the procedure and you pay for it, but you just can't walk in there and pay somebody else's tax bill and then own their property.
No, 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 no. You're not, maybe, I'm not understanding what you're saying, you're not understanding what I'm saying.
Well, there's a process, when, in December 15th, they're declared delinquent.
Okay.
Okay, if they're not paid, and then the city will then, has, the clerk has a proper, has an option to deliver the untailed, paid tax bills to me for collection, okay?
Right.
And I can collect it, and then we can also place a lien on the property, and then there's a process where they're, they can be sold. Liens can be sold.
And could you buy the lien, or could I buy the lien? On Jimmy Jordan?
Yeah, they have a, they have a lien sale, Mr. Rankin, once a year, on what he's talking about, you just show up, and Julie Barr is selling, or the sheriff, Julie Barr, maybe both of them, they're selling the liens on these properties.
And now that is on the city and county?
I really don't know the answer to that. I know for the county you can, but I, you know, I won't, I won't just bluff you, I'd have to look that up. I don't know, but...
The city needs...
I'll find out, let you know.
But you're saying after a certain date, if this is not paid?
Well, the first step is, it goes to the collection process, okay? And then the letters are written saying it's delinquent.
Uh-huh.
You need to get it paid, and then the attorney can take an action, or the city can take an action, the attorney's just a agent. And so depending on what the county, the city wants to do, we can file a lawsuit, or I think we've got, I don't know whether we have a process in the past where we sell, do any of you other mayors know whether you've sold liens in the past?
No, it's never gone that far.
Never gone that far, no.
Never gone that far?
No.
Of course, they're going, they have to be advertised, it has, it goes to the paper.
Yeah.
I mean, the next step after they're not collected, or, you know, they'll, they'll be advertised in the local papers, delinquent taxes. It's just like the county does. The sheriff's department does.
If you're familiar with the county process, I assume if there's a problem, that it would, I don't know why it would be different than the county. I mean, we're a home rule class city, we have the same rights.
I know, what Stephanie, I'm hearing say is, though, Beach, there never has been a city tax lien sale as they do in the county. Maybe they just keep, stay on the books, and those interests accrued as time goes on, an unpaid balance of 12% annually, or something like that.
Like the one across from the Baptist church, that property there, was it, the taxes was never kept paid on it, right, the White House? Is that correct?
There was probably back taxes on it, yeah.
That's what I'm saying. But if I stepped in there and bought it, just like Mr. Rollins done my grandfather's property, the taxes wasn't paid on it, which we weren't aware of, then he stepped in and paid the back taxes on it, then he owns that piece of land.
No, I don't think...
No.
That would have been sold at the courthouse door.
It went to the courthouse steps.
And that's where he bought it.
In the city. So, he done it in the city.
It goes to the courthouse steps if it gets that far.
Well, it evidently got that far. I mean, he made a parking lot out of it, but it's in the city.
It had new ownership by then, Mr. Rankin. Andy Sisso, I think, owned it, didn't he?
Yeah, but no, but he didn't own the back park because he didn't know that my grandfather owned that back park. But when Mr. Rollins stepped in and bought it from him, he found out the property line only went so far, and he found out that the alleyway that run behind it belonged to my grandfather, and it was back taxes on that alleyway. Didn't belong to nobody else but still my grandfather. And then he stepped in there and bought it and paid the taxes on it, and they did it over to him.
I thought they had to go through court to do that, or courthouse store, still at the courthouse store. You don't just get the tax. Because you pay the taxes doesn't mean you own the property. I think you have to go through the process of it being sold at the courthouse store.
He could have, but what I'm asking you, you can do it in the city and the county, then, correct?
Once it goes into foreclosure, there's a commissioner's sale, and everybody in the world has an opportunity to bid on it, and I believe he's the only one that bid on it, and he paid...
Paid the back taxes on it.
Ten thousand dollars, and he got the lot.
Right. Okay. That's what I need to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here, as far as the public hearing or setting our tax rate, would you like to come forward and speak to it or against it? Welcome to it this time. If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and now it's with the council. You can make a motion to approve or a motion to deny what's been presented tonight, but...
Need a motion? Motion, go out of public hearing?
No, we don't need one.
I don't think I need one, Joe. I just call it, the public hearing's over with since the discussion has stopped.
You made a motion to go into public hearing.
I know you made a motion to go in it, but...
Okay.
So, anyway, it's in the hands of the city council? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the tax rate?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 10-2019 at Norton's 11 at General Tax for the City of La Grange, Kentucky.
Okay. The motion been made by Joe Davenport. Is there a second?
I think there's already been a first and a second on this with Leslie and Debbie.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion on the motion and the second. If not, all those in favor of the motion, let me know what I'm saying, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Our second public hearing tonight is on our transient room tax ordinance. So, Mr. Craigmaw, if you'd like to brief the council on the ordinance itself and what we have before us, then we'll also go into public hearing on that as well.
Okay. This is the second reading of the City of La Grange Ordinance Number 11, Series 2019, styled an ordinance of the City of La Grange, Kentucky, creating the La Grange Tourist and Convention Commission, which, in summary, is an ordinance which mirrors the county's convention and tourist commission, in which it's a seven-member commission created by appointment and approval by the mayor and approved by the city council, the members of the commission. They have three-year terms. This is all authorized under KRS 91A 350 and so on, and the commission meets monthly, and one of the, they shall adopt budgets, and they have the right to spend money, and they have a right to collect, the city has a right to collect a tax, that's what they call a transient room tax, on the gross rent of, as defined in this, which is the amount of money received by the hotels, motels, bed and breakfasts, any short-term rental properties, for the purpose of attracting and promoting tourist activities and convention businesses within the City of La Grange. And that's the reading and summary of the city's transient room tax ordinance.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Craigmaw. There's a motion to adopt or approve this transient room tax by any commission member.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 11 on the transient room tax.
And I will second that.
And a motion made to adopt and a second, was that Bill Lambline?
Yes.
Okay. Second by Bill Lambline. So, at this time, I would ask that our discussion will cease and we'll go into a public hearing at this time. So, anyone wishing to speak either in favor or against this particular ordinance, you're welcome to come forward. Please state your name and address for us, please.
Good evening. Russ Morse, 2912 Maple Leaf Drive, La Grange. I'm here on behalf of the ordinance tax, or the room tax, I think it's a tremendous idea. We certainly seen the advantages of the Odom County Tourism and what it's done for Odom County, and I certainly see the advantage here in La Grange with this tax and what tourism really means to us. It would certainly help the businesses downtown. We all need more people to come through town. I manage the farmer's market, and as I said earlier, a lot of people don't know about us, but we do see a lot of tourists. They do stay at the motel, so why not take advantage of that? I used to be a traveling salesman, paid a lot of room taxes, but it's to the advantage of that locality to take that money and promote their tourism. So, I think you should take advantage of it. I'm very surprised that it hasn't been taken advantage of in the past, but I hope you vote for it tonight.
Anyone else wishing to speak either in favor of or objecting to this ordinance that we have before the council? Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay. I'll close the public hearing, so we have a motion and a second to approve and adopt this ordinance before you.
If you want to have a discussion?
I'm going to. Yeah, I've got a motion, a second. Now, we're hoping for discussion of the proposed 3% transit room tax. I will say this, Russ, when you talk about the county tax itself, I would, I want to suggest and say that supposedly, as way I understand it, Kim Buckler-Hides has been helpful to the city over the years, at least what I've been told. So, even though it was created by the county, it's not to say that she hasn't been helpful to our city in trying to propose and do things in our city. One thing being, you know, the signs down by the interstate, the brown signs that tells you about the winery or anything in relation to La Grange itself, those actually were placed there by tourism dollars. That was a big effort on her part across the county to try to have wayfinding signs for people to see different things that are interesting for them to see. So, I don't know if anyone else has any suggestion on how the county tourism has helped through Kim. Some might have different opinions, I'm not sure, but I want to say that it's been, yes, it's been a tax created by the county. I think it was county judgment's created, actually. Fuzzy Shaw from Buckner, Kentucky, he made the motion to approve it back in those days, and the rest of the fiscal court wondered what he was doing. He said, "We need some tourism money." That's what I'm doing. And so, he got a motion and a second, and actually, I think was intentionally to be, help pay for the John Black Community Center back in those days, because we wanted to bring wedding receptions and things like that into the county where people would bring their families, may have to stay overnight in our hotels. So, that was one suggestion Fuzzy Shaw had for the usage of the taxes, try to promote weddings there at the center and where families would come in and stay overnight. But that's all I've got to offer to that. But we do have a motion and a second. Anyone else want to offer any discussion before we vote?
Well, I'll just speak just really quickly. You all know that I'm in favor of this ordinance, and I just think that it's a great idea to create the kinds of things, even that Stephanie talked about, about the soccer fields. Elizabeth Town used a tourism tax very effectively to create that sports park down there, and the idea is to fill our hotels, and that's what we're hoping to do with this, to attract and create new opportunities here for La Grange. So, yeah, I'm in favor.
Anyone else offer any bit of discussion on the motion to approve?
I am...
Give your microphone, please.
I'm not against the tax as such, but I would like to ask a question. I thought that the people paid for those signs that went on at the different places that advertised on the interstate and at the interstate and up and down the streets. I think they paid for those signs themselves.
I don't, I don't think so. Not these big signs out at the interstate where you have four or five different...
They've changed the laws since I did it.
I think you have, you might have Eagle Creek Country Club on one of them, Kentucky Little River Winery, but I think those were an effort through Kim, Kim Buckler, I call her, in trying, I don't think personal business paid for those. At least, that's my opinion.
I'll find out.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, let me know what I'm saying, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. As always, as people sitting in the audience or at home, you're always welcome to submit your interest in any of these committees, and if you'd like to serve on any of them, please contact La Grange City Hall, and I'd be glad to know that you have interest in serving on a committee, and be glad to see if I can't get you involved in pointing to one of these committees that we have here in the city. Okay? Standing committee reports tonight. Do we have any committees that are operating that would like to bring attention to the other council members and/or schedule an upcoming meeting?
Yes. The committee, I don't know, my microphone's acting up, and I'm sorry.
Okay.
But the Economic Committee, we did send out a letter to, I believe, over 100 businesses here in La Grange, asking for a response as to what we could do as a city to help them move forward with their own business, and as far as I know, we've not gotten a response from that.
There's been one.
There's been one?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
And in that letter, we asked if, you know, people had ideas to help the city and whatnot, and the woman who had replied had some fantastic ideas, and once we get more responses from the business owners, we'll be able to, I think, really, I think, bring some of those ideas to council and the rest of the city. I think they'll really like them.
Yeah, and it's only been a short time, so, thank you.
Well, that's, that was a great effort on your all's part, Mayor and Leslie and whoever else on that committee. Who else is on that committee with you, Bill?
Elsie.
Elsie. If you only got one response out of 100-plus, either everything's good with what's going on, or they feel like nothing's going to be taken care of regardless of what they send you back. So, but what I would suggest you might do is take your 100 or so list, divide it between you, and maybe give 10 or 15 of them individually a call and say, "Did you get our letter? If you did, we want to follow up with you. Do you have anything to say good or bad about us? And at least we're trying to follow up." But otherwise, if you got one out of 100, it's not bad.
They certainly do that.
Okay. Well, but I appreciate you at least taking the effort to do it, okay?
And I will say, as a business owner, I did receive the letter, and I thought I'd give you my thoughts in person, but I appreciate getting it. It was nice to have a communication from the city about that, and as a business owner, know that you all are looking for my interests in that role, too. So, thanks.
Okay. Any other standing committee would like to bring an item to the council and/or a scheduled meeting for the future?
Is there a meeting going for this? The Economic?
Well, I'd like to get this golf cart discussion scheduled, Mayor. If I could, you know, go ahead and try to get it scheduled. There's any possibility of getting that scheduled? That's one item that I think needs to continue to discuss it for whatever, whatever it's worth. Keep moving it and get it into a committee discussion. Is it okay, Mayor?
Trying to find the time.
How about this Thursday night? Anybody handle that in your committee? We'll go ahead and notify the papers, put everybody on notice, and discuss it. Excuse me? Are you good Thursday night, Debbie? Mayor, you good Thursday night?
I should be.
And who else we have on that committee? Andrew, you okay for Thursday evening, Andrew, about 5:00? Can you handle it, Mayor?
If Andrew can, we usually do four, but can you do five?
I can do five on Thursday.
Okay. We have three members of that, so that meeting to the public is scheduled for 5:00 Thursday at La Grange City Hall.
I have a question, and I'm just, I'm looking at this property maintenance code. Where are we on that?
I think I'll defer to Trey Kammer on that one if we're finished with Mayor on this golf cart. You okay with that, Mayor? On the golf cart Thursday night at 5:00?
Yes, sir. I'm going to put it together right now.
Okay. Mayor Lambline, your question about the property maintenance code?
Where are we?
That's in Trey's committee. He's the chairperson, so Trey, could you answer the mayor on that for me?
With it?
So, it's the Personal Insurance Boards and Commissions Committee. We did not meet last month.
The fifth.
Fifth, yeah.
Our proposed meeting would be the 18th of this month at 5:00.
Okay. 18th, this, this...
He'd be there on the 18th.
Okay. Debbie says she cannot be there that night, Trey. Could you move it a night or so?
Does the 19th work?
What time are you talking about?
5:00.
The 19th?
Say, 13? Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Trey. Anyone else on any committees at all, as far as standing committees? Okay? If not, anyone here from the La Grange Historic District Guidelines Committee, anything to be talked about on that committee tonight?
Yeah. We do have a draft, a completed draft now, that there's still changes that need to be made, and I'm assuming we'll be meeting next Tuesday, I believe, to maybe finalize or try to get it finalized. It's quite a task, so we're doing the best we can do with what we've got. Everybody can come, whether the committee can discuss it Tuesday.
Mayor, I would agree, it's a task, and appreciate you all working on it since about January of this year. Hopefully, when you get your final draft done, we will take it to the places it needs to be heard and discussed, and then hopefully... 18th, this, this
He'd be there on the 18th.
Okay. Debbie says she cannot be there that night, Trey. Could you move it a night or so?
Does the 19th work?
What, what time are you talking about? Late?
5:00.
The 19th, say 30?
Yes.
That'd be fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Trey. Anyone else on any committees at all, as far as standing committees? Okay, if not, anyone here from the LaGrange Historic District Guidelines Committee, anything to be talked about on that committee tonight?
Yeah, we do have a, a draft, a completed draft now, that there's still changes that need to be made, and I'm assuming we'll be meeting next Tuesday, I believe, to maybe finalize or try to get it finalized. It's, it's quite a task, so we're doing the best we can do with what we've got.
Everybody can come on with it. Committee can discuss it Tuesday.
7.
Whatever that is. 6.
Mayor, I would agree, it's a task, and I appreciate you all working on it since about January of this year. Hopefully, when you get your final draft done, we will take it to the places it needs to be heard and discussed, and then hopefully, we can get it back to the city council for final adoption. Is that the way you see it maneuvering some, in the future? Okay. Thank you so much. Unfinished business. Anyone like to bring up any unfinished business that you feel is important that the council needs to be discussing tonight?
I don't know if this would be considered unfinished business, but I know it was quite an ordeal about the stoplights. I know some people were really worried, and there have been several people that have commented to me, they are very impressed and very happy with the way the stoplights have been flowing and keeping traffic moving, and, you know, they're just long enough to get the cars through, but just short enough where it doesn't back up. So the citizens I've talked to are very, very happy with the, with the stoplights there.
The only, the only comment I have forwarded to Kentucky Transportation Cabinet is, is east and west on Highway 146, you do not get a dedicated green to go left. You get a flashing yellow. So I have provided those comments to the Transportation Cabinet. They're going to look into that. You'd get a dedicated green going north and south, but not east and west, you just get a flashing yellow. I've had a few people, specific, maybe bus drivers, that say they have to veer out into the intersection somewhat to see what's coming oncoming at them. So I've asked the cabinet to maybe consider giving a, enough seconds, maybe to get two or three cars through east or west on a dedicated green left, and then let it go back to a flashing yellow. So they said they're looking at that, and, but otherwise, Leslie, I think it's working fine, as far as I can tell. I don't know if anyone else does or not, but
I thought I saw an accident up there one night.
I don't know about that. Okay, any other unfinished business that people would like to bring up? There's surely something out there you'd like to bring up?
I have a question on where we stand with the, I don't know what to call this, with the state roadside beautification request that you were looking to submit.
Um, believe it or not, I've tried, and I'm still trying, and will keep trying. I've, I've submitted my questions to Federal Highway Administration in Frankfurt. They gave me 10 different questions, such as a questionnaire, how we would enter the interstate interchange areas, Trey, if that's what you're referring to, the I-71.
But I think it was both, so we, I think we approved 146.
Yeah, you approved 146 by the courts, but out on the interstate, you really have to go through some tough answering of questions. I submitted my first go-around. I think they rejected three of my answers, and that's federal highways, because they're very concerned about letting local street departments, people get into those areas, if that's what you're talking about. And I think that's what you were. And unbeknownst to me, I was at the Local Issues Conference last week, last week for Thursday, Friday, and, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday in Louisville, the Gull House, and the Transportation Secretary, Lane Chow, announced the new federal highway director for Kentucky that will be working in Frankfurt, and so happened, this guy sat down next to me. You know, so I said, "Man, that's a good place, that's a good place for you to sit next to me." So he sat down next to me, so I gave him my cards, and, and he knows now who John Black is, I think. But anyway, he's from Louisiana. He has not gotten moved to Kentucky just yet, but he's coming. He's a federal appointee, I guess, by the president, and he will be over all Kentucky federal highways, being all of our interstates. So I'm, I've been down to District 5, Trey, and worked with their engineers to resubmit these questions. I was downstairs in the Planning and Zoning Department, working with Jim Urban and Jim Silliman, the county engineer, because what I have to submit to the Frankfurt now is a topo, a, a look at that whole interchange system, all the areas where a tractor and/or a mowing machine would enter those areas to clean them up in the event, that's what you would like to see done. If that's, you know, to get them cleaned up, the trash, the debris, whatever. So I'm working on it, but at this point, it's been a difficult, try to get the approvals, but I work on it every day that I get a chance to work on that particular issue. You okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I, I know we hadn't talked about it in a while, and I just, I traveled 65 south this past week, and there's lots of other cities in different, I know, you know, specifically we're here in Kentucky, but also in Tennessee and Alabama, where different interstate interchanges looks really nice and attractive. Ours doesn't, in my opinion, could look better. And I know that's what we're trying to do, is, is make our town more attractive.
You're exactly right. Federal highways and Kentucky Transportation Cabinet in Kentucky, they don't look at it the same way as does the federal highway system in Ohio. You know, Ohio, you see beautiful interchanges with the name of the city as you're coming off, coming to the interchange. They allow you to put flowers in there, but Kentucky has never moved to the point, I think, they told me down there Friday, that they've allowed one city thus far to, to go ahead and fill out this application we're talking about here tonight, because it's, we're about the second ones even requesting in Kentucky to get into those areas of their right of way. So you're right there with other states looking really pretty and ours not being able to, so that's about it for that subject. Okay?
Heard any more from CSX about repairing railroads, or?
I haven't heard a word from them, Joe. They, once we decided that we were not going to join in with that $177,800 commitment to replace that rail the way they suggested, I just feel that they honestly found some places otherwise to do work, and that's what they chose to do.
I would like to say there's a dangerous place right outside the police station on Main Street. It's very eaten up, and people are falling in it. I've had complaints about it. I even walked across there to go to the restaurant and almost fell in one of the holes, which I did before and had to have a new ankle, but it's neither here nor there. They need to come and repair those things, even if they're not going to come in and redo the whole thing.
I agree with that, and
You give me the number, I would be glad to call.
I'll do my best to get a hold of their track repair crew, and myself and Cory, and we try our best to get, I know exactly where you're talking about, and, and that's unacceptable. Usually Cory goes there himself and jams some hot mix or cold patch or something in there just to cut the holes down somewhat, but that doesn't last very long, but we'll work on that as of in the morning, Elsie.
Did you call Jacksonville?
Okay. New business, anything for new business, folks? Our next meeting will be Monday, October the 7th, 2019. I really appreciate what each of you all are doing each and every day in your committees and trying to make our city better. Each day, I think all of us are engaged in what we would like to see happen in LaGrange, you know, be in a kind, kind city, the kindest city in, in Kentucky, and all kinds of the beautification things, but we do have item 18. We have an executive session. We're going to go into executive session under KRS 61.810, and deliberations on, on real property. That's all I can say at this time. So I'm sure there won't be any decisions made on this discussion at all. We're just going to discuss the subject tonight, so those who would like to excuse yourself, we will come back into session, but I doubt it'd be nothing other than basically adjournment. So thank each of y'all for coming tonight, and we'll be back in just a little bit.
John?
I'd like to have them make a motion for us to go into executive session, please.
Second.
Motion made by Debbie, second by Elsie Carter. Anyone in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. What, Leslie?
I was going to take the motion.
Okay. Okay. Sorry, Leslie.